It's nine o'clock, time to call this special meeting to order the items for commission action today, or A, consider hiring a consultant to provide the code and plan review, 4223 West Main Street. I just got this to open up, sorry. Okay, I see on here we have received proposals from three companies. FSC Incorporated received 731, 2019. Pool Fire Protection Incorporated received 8-1 of 2019, and Ross and Barzini received 8-1 of 2019. And the amounts, it shows here for FSC, code review and plan of a cost of $16,370 with a one-site visit of $7,210, which is a total of $23,580. The Pool Fire Protection Incorporated had a code review and plan of $5,950 with a one-site visit of $2,280 for an amount of $8,230. And the third proposal received from Ross and Barzini was in the amount of code review and plans for $19,500 and a one-site visit for $1,350, which brought that total to $20,850. So by the, looking at the list of the proposals, it looks like Pool Fire Protection Incorporated came in with a low bid of $8,230.
After our last commission meeting, I contacted a total of four firms. In addition to the three that are listed, I contacted Henderson Engineering, and they failed to respond to my message. So the three that have been submitted are the ones that, of course, were interested. Explanation of some of the pricing, FSC listed in their proposal, three different items. They had one column that indicated the cost to review the drawings that had been completed. Then they listed a time schedule for completing that work. The next column included the additional MEP review on the apartments when they're available, and also work that would occur after they completed their review of the present drawings. And then they broke out their site visit in kind of a reimbursable expense and time involved to do the site visit. Ross and Barzini, their fee was a lump sum of $19,500 that included the review of the current drawings, plus the MEP for the apartments that were yet to be submitted. Pool Fire Protection, the review of the existing drawings, and also including the review of the MEP on the apartments was a $5,950. The site visit was as listed, $2,280. Their base proposal was all-inclusive of everything, and it also included a review of the sprinkler shop drawings and the fire alarm shop drawings. FSC, their review of the shop drawings submitted is included in the $16,370 also. Ross and Barzini was included in the $19,500 also. So their proposals were different in how they interpreted and the labor involved. As you see, the cost estimate from FSC for the site visit, they were bringing in additional people to review as completed construction, where the manpower varied on the other two. Each was experienced in, well, FSC and particularly Pool, their primary function is fire protection and architectural code review. Dealing with the nature of the project, those are a little more complex than going with a straight architecture firm that would have to get a consultant. So that's kind of a summary of the proposals as they came in. And, of course, there is quite a difference, as you see, in the totals. I think Pool Fire Protection is a qualified firm, and definitely the low price submitted.
All right. Thank you, Leonard.
Kind of the scope of the work of the sequencing, maybe, would be a better example, is that first they would start with a review of the drawings and the code footprint and the building codes relating to the type of project at the renovation is, it's kind of a misnomer. We've referred to it as a brewery, but this is not related to the operation of the brewery. It's really relating to the construction of the renovation project as a whole. So, you know, it's not a direct relation on the tenant space, but the elements completing the renovation of the building. So they would review the drawings that are there now, start that, have direction for the whole project, then I believe a time schedule has been given for the submission of the apartment MEP drawings, as well as the fire sprinkler drawings. So all this would come along, that work could begin without those elements and a direction, whether everything is fine, corrective action needed, what type of correction action. All that would be done immediately, and then just confirm the site visit, which would just be a verification that the area separations do comply with the requirement for the codes, and all that can take places shortly.
By going through and, excuse me, awarding a bid today, what is the timeframe for this review to take place? How many days are we looking at before they would come back and say, here's our findings?
FSC submitted a schedule which is going to be a little off, but they had August 9th. Ross and Barzini gave a two-week completion. Pool Fire Protection, as soon as, if we wore the project to them, they could start now, and the code review wouldn't take, you know, a few days to do.
Okay. You said August 9th, FSC said?
Yeah, that was based upon when they submitted their proposal.
Gotcha. You're humming right along.
Yeah, the longest was Ross and Barzini. I think David had, I guess, back up, David had emailed all the drawings that had been submitted with the building permit to date. So each of the ones presenting a proposal basically reviewed the drawings briefly to get a determination of their cost. So they're all sort of familiar with what they're looking at, and the time would be expedited. That was one of the requests when we sent out for the proposal, understanding that it had to be expedited, and all of them are in agreement, and working along that line to complete a review and get results back.
All right. So we did follow, sorry, we did follow the procurement policy that we occurred, or we in? I mean, this is an unusual circumstance, but we-
Professional services, you really should create a committee of not just one department.
Right.
Is one of the steps. I mean, I wouldn't per se say that happened, but we can use this as the committee, as long as everyone here is input.
Okay.
And with this, time is of the essence. And that was really, you know, when we looked at the last commission meeting to get things going quickly and turned around, and, you know, to get the proposals within a week. We don't have, we don't have time to form a committee and let the committee do their research, and, you know, to get an answer where the drawings are, where the construction is, we just can't wait any longer to do that. We did comply with the, contacted four firms. We have three prices, and I think to the letter of that, I mean, it's minute with a committee.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that. There were extenuating circumstances that caused us to move in this direction, so, but as far as we've gone out and got proposals and represented them, so being-
Kind of fell under the emergency clause of the procurement policy.
So being that all three firms have had a chance to look at the drawings, and they're all, they all have a plan, that's what it is they are supposed to look at and review, they're all familiar with that. So it looks like Pool Fire Protection Incorporated with a bid of $8,230, excuse me, is not only the low bidder, but they are, so will be able to start pretty much immediately. So we're up to the point where, sorry, I'm scrolling down as fast as I can. Okay, gentlemen, Gary, do you have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I've not heard of any of these three firms, so I'm certainly willing to take Mr. Koflic's advice if Pool is, you know, comparable, their skills are comparable to other firms, their price is certainly far, far better. I, still breaks my heart that we're bypassing city staff on this process and handling it ourselves. Also, I note that the brewery owner is in the audience. I'm wondering if he has anything he would like to say. I don't know if he does or not, or if he's just here to observe, but just, I thought, if we wanted, if-
Before, let me, I guess I didn't go in. To find the firms, I called the Office of Facility and Property Management in Topeka that handles all the architectural projects and engineering projects for the state of Kansas, and visited with one of the members that is in charge of selecting architects, engineers, and doing plan reviews, and asked him to give me names of firms that they would recommend.
Fantastic.
And he gave me the first three. Pool Fire Protection, I knew from some other engineers that had used them to do fire modeling and state facilities that they came in to do sprinklers and fire alarms. So that's, that was a source of where I got the names.
Wonderful. That's good to know. Thank you.
And-
That does make me feel better.
Yeah.
Didn't pick them out of the Yellow Pages.
No, no, I failed to mention how I got the names, but, you know, because I was concerned of finding firms that someone was familiar with and would recommend, and all these do repeat work for the state of Kansas.
Fantastic. That's good to know, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I thought maybe now would be the time, so.
Well, thanks for having me. Let me come up, and I just had a few questions I'd like to ask, just so we can get some clarification on our end, too. My name's Robert Box. I'm with Indy Brew Works down at 223 West Main Street. So as many people may know, there's actually two different companies going into that building. So we represent the bottom floor, and we're leasing the bottom floor from the building owners who also own the apartment complex. So, and then, so I had just a couple of questions for us, just so we can kind of plan out this last little bit that we need. We're almost ready to be functional, and so we've kind of hit that point to where we're on kind of a tight timeframe now of needing to get open and needing to have some income coming back in. So my question would be, the last thing that we really need to get functional is have our gas burners vented out. So at this point, would we be allowed to continue with that install of those gas burners? We're in the process of getting engineered stamped drawings for those burners as well, for, we'll get them installed. It'll be two, three weeks before we can actually go through the installation process, because materials have to be ordered, but we will have engineered drawings for that venting. But I'd like to go ahead and get that material ordered, and get the drawings ready, and get that process started.
You are in a difficult position. So we're looking at the drawings and the construction, and that's where our communication goes to. The contractor is the one that will be responsible for scheduling, and, you know, as far as I see, you know, our place is not to restrict you on procuring your material and setting that schedule. We're looking, and I guess as background, there were things indicated on the drawings for the building permit that were not put in to the construction, life safety features, and we're trying to determine in the code review what is actually required. So that's kind of what we're dealing with. You know, the procurement of your equipment and the scheduling of installation, I think, is with, your agreements with the building owner. And, you know, I don't see how our action would interfere, or we could make a statement whether he can or can't procure his material.
And then-
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I think that's, I think that answers my question. The other question I would have would be, once this has been gone through this code review, who would then be responsible for giving our spaces, our company, our occupancy permit? Would that go back to city staff, or would that be something that would have to be reviewed? Like, is it, is it going to be a thing where this third party's going to give a recommend, it's going to give a recommendation to the city, and then it will go back to, we would need the city inspector to give us our occupancy after his own review? Or would this be, we could get our occupancy from, our occupancy permit from this, once this third party gives their recommendations?
I think the occupancy permit will come from the city. The consultant, we haven't made a motion yet for Pool yet, have we?
No.
Okay, so in general, the consultant that reviews is going to make their findings known to the city that would transfer communication to the contractor. Then the consultant will work to make sure that the modifications are done in a proper manner with city staff, so your occupancy permit will come from the city. You know, the consultant will be working with staff to issue that approval. So we're not looking at an additional, I think what you're, what I hear you, your concern is that through the process, it delays you further. And we're aware of your timeframe, and we're going to make sure that there's no unnecessary delays. Once the work is corrected, that the approval will come in. And right now, it's kind of ambiguous, not knowing exactly what the code is going to, that review will determine, but everything is going to be done as quick as possible to shorten that time for you as we possibly can.
For, and then my, just one more question I have written down, unless y'all have any more questions for me after I'm done, but we just installed our glycol chiller lines, which moves glycol and water through that. Is that something to where, that we could get someone to come in and inspect that from the city now, or do we need to wait for that full review before anybody come look at those lines? Because they just, it's just another, I mean, they just move a glycol mixture with water that's not under pressure. I mean, it's maybe like 20 pounds per square inch, it's not significant pressure, but just to pump it.
Some of the equipment and installation, I don't believe is under code review that we would have to review and authorize, if that-
Because a lot of it says up to, even whenever I was trying to get the manufacturer's recommendations for some of the install, if they don't manufacture the material that's needed, like the copper piping or the venting material, they won't give a recommendation. That's all goes to local jurisdiction and a licensed contractor's recommendations. So it's, so I don't necessarily have, so some of that's just going to be what the professionals say to do with it, so.
Right, because the installation of all the operating equipment, that's on you. The elements that the city is, is only that that's governed by the building codes. And so the installation of your equipment is outside of that. You're under different requirements and compliance with manufacturing standards and the manufacturer's recommendations. So that's something that really the, we as a city should not be involved with.
Do any of y'all have any questions for me that I might be helpful with while I'm here?
No, I think, I think our questions, the questions that I had all related to your envelope, the space you're going into, nothing, there were no issues, there was no issues about what you as a tenant was doing, and like, back, ours are, and my concern is the building code, and not how you, just the code issues relating to the total building.
All right. Well, thank you very much for letting me come up and ask a few questions. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Robert. All right, then. If there's no further questions, gentlemen, I move, I make a motion that we move to approve hiring Pool Fire Protection Incorporated to perform code compliance, plan review, and inspection services regarding 223 West Main Street in the amount of $8,230. And if I'm understanding right, this would be funded out of the general fund paid by the city under other professional services. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
There's one other thing we need to discuss. It was noted on the budget and information on the RCA. The concern is about the portion of the fee invoiced back to the building owner is allowed under Appendix D Fee Schedule, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations. I think while we're on the subject, why don't we just, you know, in my opinion, we might as well go ahead and discuss that. I don't know how you two feel, but if we want to discuss this now, how do you feel, Gary?
I don't care.
What's your, what's your take on this?
Well, I think David had some information. We want to hear the information he had first, and then-
Proceed from there. All right, David?
This is the fee schedule. There is a provision under F and H in the fee schedule-
Thank you, sir.
Which is highlighted, it allows you to bill these services back.
Special plan review, special projects, new health care groups, larger groups, F and H occupancy, which is, I believe this is an F occupancy. Under the code, it does allow you to put $125 per hour with several asterisks or market rate, whichever is greater. So you guys do have that option, and there is also some other fees, additional plan review at $50 an hour, or reinspection fees by the code, mayor, however you guys want to address that.
Okay, group I occupancies are institutional, like hospitals, mental health hospitals, some group homes. 500, or 5,000 square feet, I think, that building's around 2,500 square feet per floor.
Yeah.
A is assembly, like auditoriums, and this, part of the brewery might have A, too. E is educational. F is manufacturing. H is hazardous occupancies. So F is a higher of the manufacturing occupancies. Actually, the brewery, I think, would be an F2 because of the percent of alcohol. If it's below 12%, it's F2, and above, I think, is F1. So it indicates a higher hazard. And, yeah, this is strictly my opinion, but I think with, what we're looking at is really an initial inspection. It's not a, at some parts, an additional inspection until you look at some modifications to the apartments. I think there were some additional units added after the plans were submitted, but the work is progress to electrical, I guess, has plumbing been installed in those additional units already, too, and?
It is my understanding, yes.
So, you know, although the procedure is to notify and revise the drawings as you go, and that inspection occurs along the way, but in one sense, we've already inspected because it's all sheet rocked in and covered up, so how can we do an additional inspection to the modification if the modification is already done? See what I'm saying?
Yep. I see what you're saying.
Although the process wasn't followed per letter, and that's created some obstacles, but yet how can we come back and assess the contractor when we've already completed the work without any notification to him that there was an issue at the time? Am I making myself clear?
No, yeah, that makes, that makes sense to me.
So although by rights and the fee schedule, there is some amount that the city could justifiably charge the contractor, but with the whole nature of what we've found since the 13th of June, for me, I don't feel comfortable charging any of this off to the contractor. And that's strictly my opinion. I'm open to listening to your opinions, too.
I agree, Leonard. I, I've said this before, we've got two businesses- I, I agree, Leonard. I, I've said this before. We've got two businesses investing about a million dollars in that building and I believe we would have spent $100,000 to bring it down because it was about to collapse. So, I would like to go out of our way to be good to work with. And unfortunately, this job has not really gone that way. And I too think it'd be a little awkward to come back and say, we've decided to bring in a third party to review everything and we're going to charge you for it. I'm, I just am not very comfortable with that. So, I'm with you.
Yeah. Because, you know, what we're, we're looking at is really the initial code review. There, the documentation of the changes, you know, I, I can't say that the city bears 100% of the responsibility for where we've gotten. You know, according to our city ordinance is a contractor makes a change, which you look at the, the drawings initially called for fire sprinkler throughout the building, MEP drawing code footprint, and it was eliminated in portions of the building and modified. So, by our city ordinance, the architect of record is to send notice to the city stating the change, why the change, and how the change is going to still comply with the code. And the correspondence goes, you know, with notification and, and the contractor should be submitting that information. And without that, that happening and, and no correspondence to where we are now to speak of, then we have to, we still have to guarantee that the life safety features of the building are, are in place to protect the occupants, no matter which part of the facility they're in. So, I, I think what we're looking at is, in this fee for the consultant is our responsibility as a city. And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to listen. Anything else from, from you guys on your opinion?
I appreciate Gary and Leonard, your opinion on this. You know, you deal with this. You've dealt with this in the past. You know more about this than I do, but I also feel like this cost should be borne by the, by the city. That's initially how we, we proposed it because of some issues that we wanted to have clarified before signing off on this project. So, I'm in, I'm in agreement with both of you. Due to your explanation and your explanation, I'm inclined to agree with what you both gentlemen have had to say. So, I think we're all in agreement.
But I, I think too, as, as this is resolved with the code review, that once the findings are set, that if the contractor doesn't abide by those findings, then any additional inspection should be charged. That I just don't think from this time back, we could charge extra, but say once the notice is made and, and if city inspection has to keep reoccurring for items that they're notified that it has been completed and they find out that it's not, then, then I think that the chart is applicable to his work. I just, I don't want to give a, a blank check going forward from this point that, well, you're not going to charge me, so I'm going to call for inspections that aren't ready. Because, you know, that is, I, I expect when, when a contractor gives notice of a final inspection or a partial inspection indicating a certain percentage of the work to be completed, that when they get there, the inspector find that work completed, not doing the wrap-up to get it complete after the point. But it has to be 100% to the point they designate or they will be charged.
That's fair enough. And I think that's very reasonable.
So, I think that our next step is to notify Pool and its Fire Protection today and have them send their signed agreement based upon this and date a completion for us that we can let everybody know when we'll be expecting.
Will you contact them?
Yeah, I'll contact them and give a, Dave and make them aware.
And remind them of the urgency.
Right.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Great. Great. Gentlemen, anything else?
Who's signing the agreement?
Mayor would sign the agreement.
Okay. Just on the clarify.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions, then.
So, that bring, do we need to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement? Or is that accepted with our acceptance of the proposal?
I think, I think that's inherent, inherent in the motion you already made.
I didn't want to delay it again. Well, you didn't make a motion to do that. And so we're here, we're, okay, thank you.
We can over motion sometimes.
I agree. Okay.
All right. So, we're at to the point to where we've, we've handled the business that we were, had the special meeting to do today. We've reached that point. We're ready for adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you for being in attendance today.